Getting to order in our first trial run of having our executive session ahead of time. I really hope this is the start of something good. I've had a lot of positive feedback already about it. So I hope that we and this will work out for us. What we need is motion to go. We do have a call in present with four, so need a motion to go to.
Unless he's on the phone.
Oh, he's on the phone. I got you. All right. So I need a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Sees. Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Passes unanimously, we will move into executive session.
We are back in session. Is there a motion that we come out of executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Sees is their discussion. Hearing none. Is Mr. Hip still on the phone?
Uh oh.
He's connected, okay.
Okay, all right. Can you hear me, Les? All right, are you in favor of coming out of executive session? All right, all those in favor by show of hands, and Mr. Hip's already voted in the affirmative. We are out of executive session. All right, County Council met in executive session for the aforementioned reasons. No action was taken during our executive session. We now call our six o'clock meeting to order. We tried something different today, where we had our executive session first. And there are smiles and thumbs up coming from the audience, so we're gonna try that and see how... I think it's gonna be something that we'll stick to. I really think it's gonna work for us, and more importantly than that, we hope it's respectful for you, our citizens, and will make you more likely to come to the meetings and see what's going on. So, having said that, I would call on the Honorable Carl Sees for our invocation and pledge.
Let's bow our heads. Lord Jesus Christ, we gather here tonight to conduct the business of Newberry County. Hope you give us the wisdom and knowledge to be able to do the business of the county for the pleasure of the citizens, that we do the right things. And also, we're here tonight to ask you to send prayers to the victims of the terrorist attack over in Israel, and also that you help protect those hostages now and pray for their safe return. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it is wonderful to have you all with us here tonight. We welcome our elected officials, and we're glad to have you both with us tonight. What a blessing it is. We also want to recognize Councilmember-elect Mr. Fulmer, and glad to have you back with us again tonight as well. So, Ms. Donna, Ms. Karen, what a blessing to have y'all with us tonight as well. So, thank you for being here, yes. All right, we'll move into our agenda. We have first the adoption of the consent agenda, which is the meetings of the Newberry County Council minutes of October 4th. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes as published? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Reader. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hip votes... he raises his hand and vote as well. All opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Item number two on our agenda is additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion? We adopt the agenda as published. Reverend Skurrie makes the motion. Mr. Shealy makes the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor by show of hands. I would note that Mr. Hip is voting via Zoom at the same way. All those opposed likewise. None in opposition. The motion passes unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is the recognition of employee service awards. And we'll turn that over to Mr. Jeff Scheckar, our county administrator.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. This is always a part of the meeting that I enjoy the most. And actually, this evening, we got a rare opportunity to recognize an employee within the administration division, because we only have so many employees there, and also some of them with thirty-five years of service in the county. So, we don't get to do that every month. And so, our first employee we recognize is Ms. Karen Bremer. If she could join me up front.
You got to get up, Karen.
Karen, it's a pleasure to recognize you for fifteen years of service to Newberry County. Karen came to work in the administration division of the county back in October 2008, and she's held many titles. Now, we don't keep statistics on this, but she may be the employee that's held the most titles during their tenure in Newberry County in history. We just all know, we all may say that. She's worked in accounting, budgeting, special projects. She's played an integral role with CPST. I know the CPST that we're working through now, the 2022. Karen initiated that and has played a central role in making that happen, getting that before the voters. Karen holds the position currently of deputy administrator. About seven to eight months ago, she was acting county administrator. She's done that as well, so she's had a lot of titles.
Yes.
Lot of titles. And that's why it's just a pleasure to recognize you this evening for your years of service at the county. And you've been a tremendous resource at the county, a great resource to me to help me transition into a new job. I really appreciate that. And so, on behalf of County Council and our management team, and many of your colleagues are here today, I'd like to present you with a certificate, a pen, and a token of our appreciation. Thank you. We're gonna do photo ops. Oh, Ryan's coming down, thank you, okay. Ms. Karen. This is our thirty-five-year veteran, sir.
Yes.
Well, it's a privilege for me to recognize you for thirty-five years of service in Newberry County. Karen came to work for County Treasurer George Summer. I know George's two sons. So, I checked with Greg Summer, I said, "Now, this is your dad, right?" He said, "Yes, that was my dad." But came back to work for George Summer back in nineteen eighty-eight. He was treasurer at the time. And Karen spent twenty years working her way up the ladder within that department. She held many different job titles, not quite as many as Karen Bremer. But she had different job titles. And so, 2008, when she was elected treasurer. And so, she's served in that capacity ever since. That's fifteen years. And elected office, that's not easy. And I know that one of the things that Karen really enjoys is interacting with the public and interacting with county taxpayers, you can imagine. Most folks make annual pill permits to honor their treasure building and pay their taxes. Or very little of that, they do some votes and things. And I know you enjoy interacting with them when you have an open door policy. And that's something you take pride in. That's why it's a pleasure to recognize you for thirty-five years. And I get to do that on behalf of County Council and the staff. And we just thank Karen. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, and we have a certificate and a token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Mr. Peter's just pulling the parking lot, so he's here.
He's in the parking lot.
Stand by.
Well, Ryan, thank you so much for being here this evening. I know you had a rush to get here, and I see you've got your family with you. I'm glad they were able to make it. It's a pleasure to recognize you for twenty years of service in law enforcement. You know, twenty years of service with the same employer is never easy. It's not easy in public service, and it certainly isn't in law enforcement and public safety. It's a difficult job, and we certainly appreciate everything you do. Ryan came to work for the county back in 2003. He started at the detention center under the umbrella of the sheriff, and then several years later, he moved over to the sheriff's department where he was a road deputy. He's now an investigator, and I know you're involved with some white collar crime investigations, IT, and the eight-hundred megahertz radio system that we've got. So, he's got varied responsibilities there. His mom was also a public servant. She worked at the sheriff's department, if I've got that right.
Yes.
And she, I know she was administrative assistant for Sheriff Foster, and she did some work in purchasing too. So, you come from a tradition, a family of public service. And that's why we appreciate everything you do, and it's a pleasure to recognize you on behalf of County Council and our management team. We've got a number of partners that's here. Thank you so much. If you do a group photo, sure. Everybody's gonna be interested.
Where y'all at me in back?
The last thing they want that over in the log, isn't it?
Yeah, I need to move on down, too.
I got a face made for radio.
Absolutely. I know I say this a lot, but I believe from the bottom of my heart that the employees of Newberry County are what make Newberry County so great and so special. And so, we're just thankful for each of you and what you do to make this a great place. Item number four on our agenda is public appearances. First on public appearances is Stephen Knapp, who's the Executive Director of the Newberry Museum. Good to have you with us this evening.
Oh, always good to be here. So, what I wanted to do for you all this evening is just give you a short update of everything that's been going on at the museum. Short is the operative word, because we've had so much going on, I'm almost starting to lose track of things. Everything is moving very well over at the museum. Our visitation is still very good. I'm hoping to have those numbers compiled for you, hopefully in time for your next meeting. But we are still kind of gathering all the data on that. Little bit of what's been going on at the museum. We just wrapped up in September our exhibit on the Masonic lodges of Newberry County. That exhibit was very well received, actually ended up garnering national attention. We had a national Masonic podcast called the Masonic Roundtable actually do an episode about the exhibit, which for my little nerd heart was just awesome. Getting to appear on a national thing like that. It was also a great exhibit because we brought in all parts of the county for it. Every community in the county was represented in that exhibit, from Whitmire all the way down to Peak. And so, it was just really great having representatives from all over the county in that. One of the local lodges, Amity, which is the one right over here, here in Newberry, celebrated their one-hundred-and-seventieth anniversary by holding a meeting in the exhibit, which was just a ton of fun to have them there. Our oldest artifact in that exhibit dated back to the seventeen-fifties. So, it was just an immensely awesome exhibit to put together. Our current special exhibit is celebrating one-hundred-and-fifty years of firefighting with the Newberry City Fire Department. We opened that exhibit on September thirtieth. We had over a hundred-and-eighty-seven people there just for the opening of the exhibit that day, which was a lot of fun. That's a very fun exhibit. I would encourage you to come out to the museum and see it. We have a ton of really neat stories. Newberry has a bad habit of burning down. And thankfully, we now have the Newberry Fire Department to stop that from happening. I also have to brag, I got to ride in their nineteen-seventeen fire engine. So, I consider that the epitome of my career. That exhibit is now up, and it's going to run until March. We think it's gonna be a lot of fun. We're getting a lot of positive feedback on it. And then, there's some other projects just going on with our permanent exhibits. We've recently received funding both from the county through the accommodations tax, city accommodations tax, and I've gotten several grants, which are going to enable us to update a lot of our exhibit cases. We're completely rethinking a lot of our exhibits, like how do we want to present these different things to the public? And so, and we're also getting cases that will enable us to show a lot more of what we have. So, we're gonna have a lot more artifacts on display. I'm envisioning with some of these that they'll be three-dimensional, so you can walk all the way around them and get to see all sides of an artifact. I think it's gonna be a lot of fun doing that. We're expanding our exhibits on each of the municipalities in the county. We now have a lot more stuff from all of our towns, and so, all of those exhibits are going to grow with this. The exhibit that's gonna grow the most is our military exhibit. Just since I started here, we have probably more than quadrupled in the number of military artifacts that we have. We have everything now from, we have uniforms that take us all the way from the Civil War to modern day. My favorite is we have a complete World War I doughboy uniform, which just, as someone who's worked in museums, you never see those intact. There's one little tiny moth hole on the back, and that is it. Everything else is perfect. So, the fact that we have that just, again, is amazing. And so, that exhibit is now gonna grow to take over a whole wing of the museum on that end of the building. And what we're envisioning doing with that is rather than it just being the artifacts, for every war that Newberryans have been in, we're gonna pick specific veterans and tell their stories. Considering that just for the Revolution, we have, I think we are up to at least four hundred documented veterans, we will have enough veterans to last till Judgment Day. And our goal is that we will be switching these out, so that hopefully by Judgment Day, we'll have been able to tell the story of all of Newberry County's veterans. And I think that'll be just a really awesome way to do it. It's a way that a lot of museums don't. And so, we're trying to be very innovative with how we talk about the military history of Newberry County. We're also working on exhibits talking about Newberry County's churches. We're working on exhibits talking about the schools. We're really working hard to represent all aspects of life here in Newberry County. We're also heavily expanding our archives. Just in the past week, we've gotten two donations of documents that are pretty mind-boggling. We received a collection of about a hundred-and-fifty-odd letters from the Civil War from a guy out of Silver Street. It's a pretty fascinating story. Born and raised in Silver Street, moves to Mississippi, fights in the Civil War, moves back. And he was a prolific writer, and his letters are just full of experiences of battles, of what they were eating, medicine. The guy got wounded twice during the war. He's often complaining about the food. And luckily enough, the great-great-great-granddaughter who brought them in had transcribed all the letters. So, and they're just a tremendous resource. And just yesterday, a completely random, we had a tour, and a lady came in on this tour, and she brought with her a bunch of eighteenth-century documents, which are everything from wills to land grants to just all sorts of excellent documentation for not just Newberry, but South Carolina history. So, what we're intending to do with all of this is, right now, we're in the process of cataloging them. We're going to digitize them over time and make them accessible to researchers. So, this is just gonna be a tremendous project for us, but we are absolutely tickled to death to have it. Other things we are working on, we are increasing, really stepping up our community outreach and getting involved with projects out in the community. We are currently heavily involved with the SC-250 project, trying to document the American Revolution here in Newberry County. Really with that, we're trying to tell the stories that have not been told. So, we're really focusing on the stories of loyalists, African-Americans, Native Americans, and women, and really trying to build a base of documentation for those groups in Newberry County, as well as preserving sites of Revolutionary War importance throughout the county. So, with that, we're part of a statewide project. We have also partnered with the Rosenwald School Committee here in Newberry, which is seeking to document the Rosenwald Schools in Newberry County, which were African-American schools from beginning in about the nineteen twenties till, I believe they ran till about the nineteen fifties. We are very lucky that there are still a generation of folks who went to those schools. And so, the museum is partnering with the Rosenwald Project to try and interview those folks to capture these stories before we lose them. And we're also assisting this project with trying to preserve the schools that are still standing here in Newberry County. And so, we're taking a very active role in that project. We're also heavily involved now, or about to get heavily involved with the Gallman Place Project, with the old Gallman School. I was very excited. I went through a walkthrough with them just a few days ago. I think the possibilities for that building are amazing. The chance to preserve that aspect of our county's history is gonna be a lot of fun. And again, we are just continuously gathering all sorts of stories from Newberry County. We're making an effort right now to preserve the history of our textile mills here. We've just really stepped up that project, which I think is gonna be really exciting for us. And then, we're also developing our plans going forward. We're working on laying a plan that's gonna go not just the next five years, but decades into the future to really guarantee that our museum is on the map, not just in Newberry County, but all over the state. We are working on collabing with other museums. Right now, I'm in talks with the Lawrence County Museum and the Union County Museum about ways in which we can work together to send visitors between our counties. We're partnering with many community organizations. We're also looking at, oh, a perfect example of collabing with other museums. We are going to be partnering, beginning at the end of March, of next March, we are partnering with the National Museum of Civil War Medicine, which is out of Frederick, Maryland. We're going to be doing an exhibit on Civil War surgery and medicine and all of that fun stuff. And we've actually been able to secure cooperation with that National Museum for what we're doing. Going back a little bit to the 250 project, I'm not gonna get everyone's hopes up on this, because I'm still in the discussion phase. We are talking to the Royal Armory's Museum at Windsor Castle in London. They have a rifle from the American Revolution that was captured at the Battle of Mudlet Creek down near Chapel's. I think it's about time that thing came home. So, I am in talks with them about at least a loan for now, for 2026. They have acknowledged my existence, and coming from a royal museum, I take that as a very good sign. So, we're gonna keep working on that. It's gonna be a tremendous imposition, though, because I'll have to go to London to pick this thing up. So, just, oh no, it's gonna be horrible. But hopefully, that will happen. We are in talks with them. And then, we are also developing school programs. I am putting together a list of programs for each grade level in Newberry County so that we can provide programs on kind of an on-demand basis for the schools. I'm gonna make sure that all the teachers in Newberry County have examples of what we can do. We're building a network of craftspeople, demonstrators, and reenactors who can come into the schools and provide these programs. That is a short rundown of what we're doing.
Alright.
So, we have a lot going on, and so, I strongly encourage you to stop by the museum and take a look at what we're doing.
Exciting days indeed. Thank you so much. We appreciate your efforts. Next on our public appearances is Mr. Lou Neiger on electric vehicles and public safety.
Hello, gentlemen.
Lou.
I'm glad to read this because I haven't public-spoke for ten years, so please bear with me. Fire equipment to fight EV fires. Protecting our first responders in Newberry. Needed is special fire retardant blankets, which a lot of you have already on your desk, under vehicle nozzles and respirators. They're needed for EV fires with five thousand to nine thousand batteries packed in an average-size EV. But they're a little bit longer than this here. It can burn up to one thousand five hundred degrees Fahrenheit. The fire can reignite from two hours up to four days after the first fire. Water may not prevent an EV fire from spreading. Battery cells are known to explode and quickly spread to other batteries. The battery gases, vapor, and smoke are highly toxic and flammable and must be inhaled. A chemical reaction can severely burn the esophagus in as little as two hours, creating an esophageal perforation, local cord paralysis, or even erosion into the airways, the trachea. an esophageal perforation, local cord paralysis, or even erosion into the airways, the trachea. It can take up to 30,000 to 40,000 gallons to put out an EV fire without proper equipment. Largest Newberry fire truck is 3,000 gallons. Most of Newberry has fire hydrant, but have no special fire retardant blankets nor undercar nozzles that puts out that fire. How bad is lithium fire? A customer went to Kibler's, most of you know where Kibler's is, a few months back for another reason, but decided to also change his personal lithium battery out of his cellphone. He pried the back off, pried the lithium battery out, and bent the battery of the cellphone. The small lithium battery caught fire with smoke. They scrambled to throw it outside. It left about, and you can see in your notes there, a one-half-dollar size burn on the countertop, and it took under two minutes. Many U.S. counties with EV fires that continues to reignite all dig a hole, fill with water, and push the vehicles into the hole. My question comes up, what about the contamination of the groundwater? BMW and Volkswagen should be in discussion with all the state, and I'm suggesting that this county especially, with county fire marshals, heads especially city of Newberry and volunteer fire department to understand best way to address EV fires and help with funding the fire protection equipment. This is the basic equipment. Now, Newberry County City looking to the tip of the iceberg for proper equipment, how to fund the first responders' equipment. These are concerns that need to continually be addressed by our county and fire, excuse me, fire marshals. South Carolina, there is 14,440 EV-registered vehicles in South Carolina. By 2026, Volkswagen, a lot of them will be shipped out, and will put out approximately 200,000 EV vehicles. Current administration in the feds wants new EV sales to be approximately 30% to 40% by 2030. It's coming real fast. Newberry is not ready, and I've only been working on this about one month. So there's a lot more questions on there that I have. I don't want to take your valuable time, and thank you for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Niger, for outstanding growing concern. We would ask that this information be forwarded to Tommy Long with that, and also as Chair of Public Safety Committee, if we could have Mr. Niger possibly come back at our next meeting and talk to us as well. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five on our agenda is ordinance number 10-01-2023, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number 12-24-01, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number 06-11-16, and codified in Chapter 153 of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances Establishing Zoning Classifications and Districts as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling one acre designated as TMS number 339-1-10 from RG, which is General Residential, to R2 Rural. Is there any change in this since our last reading? Katie says there's no change in this. This is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. If anyone would like to speak for or against this ordinance, please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing here from no one, unless there is objection from council, I would declare the public hearing closed. Hearing no objection, the public hearing is closed. Subsection B of this agenda item is the second reading. Is there a motion this be second reading? Mr. Shealy makes the motion. Mr. Sees makes the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Would affirm that Mr. Hilt is voting by show of hand via the teleconference. All opposed likewise. Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously for second reading. Item number six is ordinance number 12-02-2023, which is an ordinance adopting the Newberry County Fire Protection and Prevention Code, providing for periodic inspections and enforcement of the code, and establishing a process for appeals and penalties for violation. Subsection A of this agenda item is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item can come forward at this time. Hearing and seeing from no one, unless there is objection from council, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, public hearing is closed. Subsection B is second reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion related to second reading? Mr. Reader makes the motion. Mr. Shealy makes the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by show of hands. And Mr. Hilt votes by show of hands via teleconference. All opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously for second reading. Item number seven is consideration and approval of the proposals for architectural and engineering firms for the 2022 Capital Project Sales Tax, CPST, Projects 2023-13 and 2023-14. Ms. Crystal Walter.
Thank you. These two solicitations go hand in hand, and were broken down into two groups. The first one, 2023-13, Group One consisted of the Public Safety Complex, the Town of Pomeria Community Center renovations, and the Whitmire Town Hall gym renovations. We received nine responses for this solicitation and conducted in-person interviews with four of the firms, DP3 Architects, GMK, JLA, and Rosen Blue. The evaluation committee consisted of Mac Bartley, Karen Brimmer, Scott Sawyer, Jeff Shaker, and myself, all with Newberry County, and Josh Cale, who is the construction manager, and he's with Clayton Construction, who is the construction manager for all of the 2022 CPST projects. The second group was 2023-14, Group Two, and that consisted of the Downtown Amphitheater, Gallman School renovations, Town of Prosperity Park improvements, and Little Mount Reunion Park improvements. We received six responses and interviewed three of these firms, Becker Morgan Roop, DP3 Architects, and JLA. The evaluation committee consisted of the same group of individuals I listed in Group One. JLA and DP3 submitted responses for both the solicitations and were shortlisted for interviews for both of them. The committee recommends that JLA provide architectural services for the Downtown Amphitheater and the Pomeria Community Center renovations, and we recommend DP3 Architects for the remainder of those projects. We feel that the two firms would be best suited to work on these projects, and we all agree that at least two firms are needed to keep these projects moving forward. Staff would like to enter into negotiations with both of these firms for these projects.
Okay. We'll open the floor for any questions for Ms. Walter. Hearing none, thank you for that report. Is there a motion that we approve them to enter in negotiations with the firms that she has already designated? Reverend Scurry makes the motion. Mr. Shealy makes the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Let the record reflect that Mr. Hilt voted by show of hand as well. All opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, Ms. Walter.
I wanted to mention also that the Dedention Center sale block addition, that will be a separate solicitation, and we're in the review process for those architectural firms now.
Not just anybody can do that.
Right.
Good point. Thank you for bringing that out. Item number eight on our agenda is ordinance number 10-03-2023, which is an ordinance to authorize the county of Newberry, by Newberry County Council, to sell real estate described as a tax exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference known as tax map number 451-10-1 to TrueCast LLC upon such terms and conditions described in the bill of sale in Exhibit B. Mr. Shaker, anything you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Red light is on, or Eric, red light, it's on? Or red light is off?
Yeah.
Okay, we're on, I'm sorry. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. We've had microphone issues in the past. So what this ordinance would do, anytime the county wants to convey any interest in property, real property that the county owns, it has to use an ordinance for that. And this would include a fee simple interest like this, where we would be conveying the property to another party, even if we were to convey a lease, you have to use an ordinance. And the TrueCast fee-in-lieu-of-tax agreement that they previously were under is an old fee-in-lieu-of-tax agreement that predates a change in legislation in terms of how that's handled. And so in exchange for a reduced incentive for the project, they had the option at the conclusion of the FLO, which we've reached, to take ownership of the property. So since the inception of the agreement to present, the county has retained the property. Now they're exercising their option to take possession of the property for a nominal consideration, and so what this ordinance would do would be to put into effect the provision of the FLO that dates back to the 90s. So this would be first reading. It'll require three readings and a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you so much, and we were briefed on that earlier, so is there a motion this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Reverend Scurry. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Let the record show Mr. Hilt is voted by show of hand as well in the affirmative. All those opposed likewise. Seeing none, motion passes unanimously for first reading. Item number, ordinance, sorry, agenda item number nine is ordinance number 10042023, which is an ordinance to amend county ordinance 12-30-10 to provide for alternate members of county committees.
Yes, sir. Well, this was an ordinance that members of council had requested. County council has, and this was some time ago, implemented a system of standing committees, and right now y'all have four committees. You've got an economic development committee, an executive committee, a finance committee, and a public safety committee. Each one of those committees is composed of three council members that are appointed by the chair at the beginning of the calendar year, and then y'all, you know, many of you serve on multiple committees. Some interest was expressed in having the ability to designate an alternate when you can't attend the meeting. We've had a few instances where just, you know, schedules are what they are, and council members have not been available to attend meetings, and so what this ordinance would allow would be for a member, a council member who is a member of a committee who has a conflict and will not be able to attend, to designate an alternate and inform the chair of the committee prior to the meeting. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility to ensure that you always have a quorum and we're able to keep the business of the council moving.
As you said, this is something we've asked for, just to kind of keep things flowing with schedules and everything, what they are, so I think this will be a wise move for us moving forward. So is there a motion that this be first reading? Mr. Sees makes that motion. In fact, we could have had a meeting one night when Mr. Hilt, I mean, Mr. Sees was here, and we didn't have a quorum, so it kept us from having a meeting, and this would have fixed that. So Mr. Sees makes that motion. Who will second? Mr. Shealy will second that motion for us. Is there a discussion? Hearing, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hilt.
I was going to say, Mr. Sees was taking the initiative to make that happen. It's embarrassing that we have to be in a meeting without a quorum, and this allows us the opportunity to implement that from having to take the quorum.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Have a motion and a second. All in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hilt votes in the affirmative by video. All opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously for first reading. Ordinance number 10-05-2023, which is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of sale of not exceeding $35,250,000 general obligation bonds of Newberry County, South Carolina, the sale and issuance of general obligation bond anticipation notes and anticipation to the issuance of such bonds and other matters relating thereto.
Yes, sir. Well, this is another action tonight that relates to the capital project sales tax. You know, the 2022 CPST, the CPST that was approved by the voters back last November, is the fifth capital project sales tax iteration that we've had in Newberry County. And the tradition here has been to put two questions in front of the voters. One, do you approve the list of projects that are proposed? And two, do you approve the issuance of debt and the proceeds of which would be used to fund the projects concurrently, as opposed to pay-go, where you would fund them in the order that they are listed on the ballot? In all five instances where that's been put before our voters, they've approved the issuance of debt. And so what this ordinance in front of you, and this first reading would do, would be to initiate the process of issuing those bonds, like we've done every time with CPST. You'll notice that there's a not-to-exceed amount. It's actually in the title of the ordinance. It's $35,250,000. That amount of money, the issuance of that amount of money was approved by the voters. It may not be necessary to issue that much more debt. We'll refine those numbers as we go through the process so that when we get to the end of it, you know where we stand in terms of what's needed. But the voters approved projects totaling a little over $37 million, not quite $37,100,000, and this would be issuing debt up to $35,250,000. What we hope to do as we're going through the process of approving the issuance of the debt would be to refine the cost estimates that were used to underpin the projects. When they were put before the voters, there was an estimate of the cost of each project, and arrive at refined estimates around the time that y'all finalize the issuance of the debt. Then we, basically, the proceeds of the debt would be available about 90 days earlier than they otherwise would if we did this sequentially. So that's sort of the logic behind this approach.
Okay. And by doing this, we allow the projects to begin moving forward in the municipalities and all that as well?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
All right. Is there a motion this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Reverend Scurry. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hilt votes in the affirmative by video. All opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously for first reading. Appointments, we have two appointments to the Newberry County Memorial Hospital Board for District Six.
Ah, yes, we have Frank M. Sen, Jr.
Okay. Motion by Reverend Scurry to appoint Frank Sen, Jr., to the Newberry Hospital Board. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Shealy. Is there a discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hilt votes in the affirmative by video by showing a hand. All opposed likewise. Carries unanimously. Mr. Sen is appointed to the Newberry Hospital Board.
And Dorothy McMorris to the Newberry Hospital Board.
Reverend Scurry makes a motion to appoint Dorothy McMorris to the Newberry Hospital Board. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Reader. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hilt votes in the affirmative by show of hand by video. All others have voted. Is anyone against by show of hands as well? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously to appoint Ms. Dorothy McMorris to the Newberry Hospital Board. Item number 12 on our agenda is any action that may be taken on matters from the executive session. We would like to make the following statement as Newberry County Council. On April the 4th, 2023, the Newberry Board of Zoning and Appeals denied a request for a special exemption to utilize a tract of rural acreage as a solar farm. As permitted by law, this denial was appealed by the property owner on June 6, 2023, and was heard by the Circuit Court of Common Pleas on August 23rd. On October 2nd, 2023, the same court issued an order reversing the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals. As a county, we must abide by the ruling of the court. Item number 13, the public comments. No one has signed up for public comments. Does anyone have public comments? Hearing none, comments or requests from our county administrator?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to let y'all know about a couple of things. One is, at the last meeting, you know, Jesse Long had made a presentation to you and asked for permission to submit a grant application through the legislative delegation to the South Carolina Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department for a PARD grant. That's the bingo tax money, the Parks and Recreation Development Fund. The request was for $38,400 to make improvements to Lynch's Woods, and we got that grant. So I just wanted to let y'all know about that.
Wonderful.
And we'll bring, you know, as part of a mid-year budget adjustment, where there'll be a number of changes that we'll propose to you that we make to the budget, that will be one of those. And the match requirement for that grant would be $9,600, and fortunately, the event rental fees associated with allowing Lynch's Woods to be used for Spartan Race for this year and the previous year, that amount, the proceeds of that will exceed the match for the PARD grant and the match for the previous grant y'all approved, which is for the PARD grant and the match for the previous grant y'all approved, which is a Recreation Trails Program Grant. So it'll fully fund those two projects and then some.
Wonderful.
I wanted to let y'all know, too, that the clarification of the Richland County-Newberry County boundary has finalized, and if you want any information on that, or any member of the public would like some information about that, you can go to the South Carolina Revenue and Fiscal Affairs Office website. They've got a page dedicated to our boundary project there with Richland, and you can see the little bit of movement that occurred with the boundary. No major impacts on property owners and no impacts on structures, which of course would determine, you know, where somebody votes. It's based on where your bedroom's located, and so there were no impacts related to that. So I wanted y'all to be aware of it, and I guess the only other thing is, you know, we had several CPST action items, and so we're moving pretty quickly to get project teams together and get them in front of our construction manager and our architects and engineers so we can get those projects designed as quickly as possible. So.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Comments or requests from council? Mr. Shealy?
Great meeting. Good presentation about the museum. Got a lot of things going on. Just overall, great meeting.
Okay. Mr. Sees?
Excellent meeting. Good choice of moving the executive meeting up front, I think, for us and the public. Just keep up the good work.
Yes, sir. Mr. Reader?
It's good to see everybody out tonight. It's good to see friendly faces, and a lot of things are going on, and everybody, keep up the good work. We appreciate everything, and I know everybody appreciates everything that you're doing. So thank you.
Reverend Scurry?
Thank you all.
Okay. Vice Chair Hitt?
Thank you for y'all making me out of my full position as such as to our meeting. So it's supposed to be a good idea to have a session of work. Good thinking, Mr. Scurry. Our folks.
I do, I think that worked out well. It's certain we'll continue for a while and just see how that goes, but we want to make it more accessible. You're more likely to be here when you're not unnecessarily waiting while we're doing business, so I think it'll work well. Future meetings, I did have one item of discussion before we adjourn, and that is we have a goal-setting session on November the 9th at 4:00 PM. In talking to our county administrator, he feels like that we would do better to do that after the first of the year, when we get closer to the budget season, that would give them more time to prepare, and we kind of align our budget with our goal planning as well so that the budget and our goals are consistent with each other. So I wanted to see if there was any objection from council members to counsel that meeting and reschedule it after the first of the year to follow that. I think that sounds like solid recommendation to me, so is there any objection from anyone to reschedule that?
No. No.
Everybody good with that? Mr. Hitt?
No objection.
No objection. All right, so we will counsel the goal-setting session of November 9th, Jeff, and you can, we can, after the first of the year, we can revisit that. So, all right. So then our future meetings will be Newberry County Council on November the 1st, at 6:00 PM. Executive Committee meeting, November 6th at 6:00 PM. Veterans Day, our offices will all be closed, and the Newberry County Council meeting on November 15th at 6:00 PM. Ms. Shealy makes a motion to adjourn. Mr. Reader second, said, is there any discussion? All in favor by show of hands. Mr. Hitt votes in the affirmative by video. All opposed likewise. Seeing none, motion carries unanimously, and we stand adjourned.